As opposed to.
Test, test.
Oh, you were live, that's good.
Okay, well, here he is. Is he at the end? Oh, we don't know it right. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending this meeting of the Blythewood Planning Commission on January the second. It's right on six o'clock. We'll get busy with the order of the evening. The chair would like to recognize Mr. Travis Smith, who just joined us. He's our latest member of the Planning Commission.
Yes. It's on. Thank you.
All right. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I think I'm hounded in now. If we'd start with the road call, Mr. Wilson, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Malcolm?
I'm here.
Travis Smith?
Here.
Erica Page?
Here.
Marcus Taylor? Ken Coleman? Jamal Mosley?
Yeah.
Bill Toms?
Thank you. And the first order of business is to confirm notification and posting of the agenda.
Has been posted.
Thank you. Welcome. Motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as it stands?
We have a move and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The adoption, the agenda is adopted. If you'd join me with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And the next item, item E on the agenda, is approval of the minutes, which you will have had a chance to read through in the packet that was distributed prior to the meeting. This goes back to our meeting in October.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Erica. We have a motion. That was a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. So, action item two. At this time of year, we need to nominate and elect the officers of the Planning Commission, starting with the chairperson. I've enjoyed that privilege for the last year or so. I'd be happy to continue, or if anyone else wishes to be nominated, feel free.
Nominate Malcolm George?
Oh, thank you, Bill.
I second that.
Let me have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, guys, I'm with you again. And we also need to nominate and elect our vice chairman for 2024.
Jamal Mosley.
Well, I think we have to do it formally. So, we have a nomination. Mr. Mosley, Vice Chair. And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Mosley. Thank you. And last but not least, nomination and election of our secretary. In the past, it has been carried out by Mr. Wilson here. And I would, I'd like to nominate Mr. Wilson as our secretary for 2024.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Wilson. You have to put up with us again.
Now, could you, who motioned and seconded?
Malcolm.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Very good. We also need to adopt the 2024 meeting calendar, which has essentially been discussed by council previously. And we're included in that, aren't we?
That's correct. If you had any changes, particularly for the board, we would make those changes. But generally, the first Monday every month, unless holidays, which relatively frequent.
Alternate day.
Right.
It looks like we need a correction on January.
Yes, I sent an email out.
I wasn't sure if this is the corrected one.
No, I apologize for that. Appreciate everybody being here tonight, not tomorrow.
Right. Well spotted. Okay, notwithstanding that, do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda for 2024?
And the calendar, are you approve it?
Yeah, well, sorry, the meeting calendar.
Motion to approve it?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting calendar is approved. Thank you. Very good. Okay, down to some real business then. That's discussion and approval of the subdivision preliminary plat for the Wilson track subdivisions. Williamson, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, what you have before you, so as you recall, when we have a subdivision, the sketch plan comes before the planning commission that gives a general overview of how the subdivision will be designed. And then, following approval of that, they come back with construction drawings, basically more solidify what was approved on the sketch plan. So, as you recall, it was in October, there was, the planning commission approved the sketch plan with a few conditions, and the applicant has addressed those conditions. And I just highlight a couple of them, just for one particularly, is that the rezoning, because we were, we're on the cusp of doing a major rewrite of the zoning ordinance, of rezoning all the property, what they did was just designed it on the preliminary plat to the most restrictive zoning, which is D1. And then, when we do the rezoning of the entire town, we will rezone that to, it really was more just a kind of a cleanup thing anyway, because there's no difference between R20 and D1 for the most part. And this is D1, it's just, it's kind of, it's not really a residential district. But ultimately, we want residential subdivisions to have residential zoning, and they certainly will when we do the rezoning of all the property. So, by designing it by the most restrictive setbacks and design elements of the lot, each lot, it's within understanding that they will get rezoned, probably in the middle of the year at the latest. So, by the time this, these plans get underway, they should have a residential zoning. So, just wanted to point that out. They've continued to work with the subdivision that's required to make the improvements to Langford Road and Wilson Boulevard. And they have shown on the construction drawings and have provided approval from DOT to provide, to build this four-foot sidewalk, not only throughout the neighborhood, but also primarily is on the DOT right-of-way from the entrance of the subdivision to essentially Blythewood Academy, is about where the sidewalk is existing, and to tie that in, and so in front of other properties, which will give the residents of that neighborhood an opportunity to walk to the town as well as to the park. So, I think that's a good amenity. So, then, upon my review of the preliminary plat, you'll see on the second page of my memo, they, on the sketch plan, there was a great emphasis on preservation of trees, which, you know, is in the ordinance, but they showed trees running all the way up to the front right-of-way as an exhibit, as part of the sketch plan approval. And so, just point out that that's not a requirement by code, but it is, it was shown on the sketch plan. And so, I did provide that comment to the planning commission as well as to the applicant. And that applicant responded that that is not something they are able to do, but they are able to preserve the trees in the rear part of each lot to meet the ordinance requirements. And they're here tonight to answer questions about that or anything else y'all might have. And then, you can see my other comments that they will have to address before we would approve it. And then additionally, the stormwater and the road construction is also currently under review. And it's all, this, the preliminary plat will not get approved until all of the stormwater and road construction, road design is all approved as well. So.
There's certainly a lot of additional work and information provided following our last meeting, which is very helpful. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant who is here this evening?
I do.
Go ahead.
Good evening.
Hey, welcome back.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, it didn't take you long, which was great. So, I think it was 12 or 22 in our, in our packet sent Friday or Thursday. You can pull that up. It's, it is a landscaping plan.
Yes.
And what stood out to me was between lots 97 and 98, there's a significant gap. So, I was just interested in hearing why that was, or why that is. And he might be able to bring it up on the screen. Oh, there it is. You see the gap right there?
Could you zoom in for me really quickly, so I can make sure I'm correct when I'm speaking to the lot number?
Good.
Or I can walk over to Kirk really quickly.
Where?
Oh, yeah, for sure. So, so that's heavy topography in that area, which, as you can see, we stayed away from trying to put a lot there, which means that will remain natural. So, all of that would be intended as a natural tree save area. And as you can see, the limits of disturbance on a couple of pages beyond that C1, that O1, it leaves it natural with the limit of disturbance outside of it. So, we do not plan on clearing, grading, or disturbing that area at all. It's a, it's a tree save area, primarily left alone because of the topography. And if you see those little contours, how, so many of those little lines in such a small area, it's hard to do any grading with that when you have that type of topography, which is, to piggyback on Carol's statement earlier, one of the reasons why, on the sketch plan that we showed earlier, a few months ago, it showed tree saves in the side yards, but due to the topography of this site, when we did the sketch plan, it's always on a preliminarily due diligence level. When you get deeper into the CDs and you actually start to do the grading exercise, the grading constraints of the site begin to rear their head. And that's what happened. So, though that was our intent, it's not achievable on this parcel specifically, but we are able to achieve the tree save in the rear yards and keeping as much in the rear as possible. So, you know, we are still aiming to do that.
Sounds good on the trees in the rear. Between the houses, are there still going to be trees separating each plot, or is it going to be house to house?
So, just like I was speaking to the topography in that natural tree save area, if you look at the grading sheet in this plan set, it has those topography proposed lines as well. And you'll see, you know, the number of lines in between the lot, in between the lots, which speak to the rigors of grading it on the side yards. So, in order to have the lots mass graded, the way that we're trying to grade it in the front, you have to be able to tie the topography, otherwise you'll have grading issues and drainage issues. And so, that's, that's the primary reason why we have to get away from the majority of tree saves being on the side yard, but we'll still be able to meet the DBF and the tree calculations that we need to meet on a per-lot basis with the tree saves in the rear.
What's that drainage looking like between, I know nothing is built yet, but considering the topography and where you want to place the plots, how's that looking?
Yeah, so each, each, our subdivision specifically has a storm drainage profile and a storm drainage system that'll be installed with the curb. So, everything will drain to ponds. Everything would drain perfectly. So, that's the reason why we needed to get away from the tree save, because it was making it hard to make the numbers work, make the drainage work without doing something really insignificant.
No standing water or muddy ground between homes?
That's correct. None of that.
Thank you.
So, continuing with this particular plan, all the green dotted lines are going to be new?
Yeah, so in the ordinance, we have to, in a residential community, you have to plant trees parallel to the roadway. And they're typically spaced out on an average of 40 feet. So, with us having 100-foot lots, typical spacing would be two trees per lot. So, those are indicative of it being new trees planted on each lot specifically, two in the front, parallel to the road. It may or may not be specifically in those spots as proposed on that plan set, but it will be, you know, in a place that allows it to avoid the driveway and things of that nature, so that where there aren't any conflicts. But that is representative of the trees that we do intend on planting on a per-lot basis. Right, everything that's planted will be on private property, so it'll be far off of the asphalt, at least 10, 15 feet. Indigenous trees to this area, from what I'm remembering correctly when I was reviewing. It's all in the ordinance, but we will put it, install it per the ordinance to the code. So, whatever options that we have to select from in that is what we will be planting. I haven't sent that out to Beadle Landscape Architect or anything just yet, so I haven't honed in on the specific tree that we will plant. But, you know, I'm open to any recommendations that you all have, and we can move forward in that manner.
The drawing says cherry tree.
That's what I was going to say. The word of the landscape plan says economy cherry, which is a probably 15 to 20-foot maximum height tree. Generally planted in urban areas, not something that's considered impactful to sidewalks.
No, to answer your question, but can you point it out to me specifically? There aren't any, any retaining walls in the plan set that we planned out? No, no, sir. So, that's the reason, you see those, those tight contours at the rear of the lot? So, that's a part of actually transitioning the grade back to the existing topography, which is one of the reasons why that, that side yard tree save is a big issue, because there's so much fall on the site in specific areas, that you got to be able to tie everything together. So, that would look like a gentle slope coming off of the backyard, and then it'll be a tree save beyond that area.
I've got one more question. Is there any type of amenity center or recreation, or is it all residential?
All residential.
Okay.
So, when you bring up the property on the GIS, in regards to the right-of-way and the sidewalk, and the neighbor is being, it looks like a commercial property, being used as a commercial property, it's a transportation EMS. And then you have Blythewood Academy. So, part of what we asked was that there was going to be a sidewalk joining the new neighborhood with, you know, the existing sidewalk. So, with that being a private owner at this time, and...
It's DOT right-of-way, so we'll get it approved with the application permit approval. We already have soft approval and verbal approval from the DOT. They don't object to extending sidewalks for the purpose of pedestrian use. So, we did already get conditional approval on that, but the formal approval will come when we submit the encroachment permit to the DOT. There's typically a lag, a lead time, when you submit permits to DOT, because we're not the only company, of course, submitting things to the DOT. But what we do in lieu of that permanent approval to kind of help get across the finish line or get started with breaking ground and things of that nature, is submit a temporary DOT permit, which is approved on a staff level, which allows us to get, go on a little bit quicker, which we have already vetted out verbally. So, we won't have any problems installing that sidewalk. It is DOT right-of-way.
Okay.
It's not private property.
Okay, good. And then, can we talk about the email from, that was provided as in our packet from Kim Lee?
Yeah.
Horn? Okay. So, I know, I believe at the last meeting, I did ask to see, you know, where are we with the road improvements? I know this is a continuation of a, of a traffic study that was already done. And, you know, and it identifies that the improvements were not deemed to be feasible. And then, it goes on to explain that, you know, phase one's been bonded, but undetermined when we can even talk about phase two. So, can you kind of clarify all of this? Are you the right person that would be able to do that for us?
Yeah, I can, I can clarify what it means to our community, but I can't really speak to when it'll be completed, since that's another subdivision, another builder that actually has that work bonded with the DOT through Blythewood Farms. So, bonded through DOT means that DOT has money in the bank, so to speak, to be able to get this done in the event that they don't. But they're on the hook to get it done, and they will have to get it done prior to getting the next phase of their subdivision approved from a DOT standpoint. So, Blythewood Farms technically is responsible for that. So, I can't really speak to work that we're not responsible for. All I did was make sure I did my due diligence according to the comments back to me, to make sure that it was addressed. And I did a, confirm that it is bonded work, so that that work is covered, and it will be installed at some point or another. I can't speak to the timeline, though, and that comment came directly from DOT that you're reading, so.
Right. So, the whole concern and the ongoing concern becomes the straightening of Blythewood Road into Langford and crossing over Wilson in a straight, direct line. We know that the penny tax is not going to cover that. We're crossing over railroads. We got SC DOT saying that that's not feasible. So, we're kind of in a lurch, are we not?
To an extent. So, what they're talking about is that improvement of making the northbound on Wilson Boulevard, right turn only, and then making the middle lane straight. And that's what Blythewood Farms is required to make those improvements at that intersection prior to them getting the second driveway for phase two, which they are already pushing for. So, I think it's imminent, but I will continue to push to get a clearer response from, from DOT. The DOT's new chief of staff is a former Great Southern Homes employee, and he is very well aware of the issue. And so, we're going to get an answer on that. So, that's part of the final approval of this preliminary plat, to push them, let's get some clarification on when this will actually happen. But it's really contingent on Blythewood Farms, which, as y'all know, I'm sure is, you know, not in the town.
But their other phase is going to be part of our town, their second phase?
Their second phase is not, but I guess what you're referring to maybe is the town homes. I've not heard anything back from them about town, the town homes, so I don't know anything to update planning commission on that. They had a number of things that they had to submit prior to, that's not approved, I mean, it's approved by the planning commission, but it's not approved by staff, because they have not come back to address any of the comments from when they came before, planning commission. This is about phase two of the residential, single-family residential subdivision of Blythewood Farms, which is, you can probably identify where the drive is, just from how they're clearing over there.
But our, our bigger problems still exist.
There's no question. That is a problem, you know, that is going to have to be addressed. And DOT is well aware of that. And we also have, you know, the penny tax, it's not on the penny tax, but the penny tax is up for renewal, which is not anything that you can count on until there's a vote. that you can count on until there's a vote, but they are accumulating project, they asked me for input on projects, potential projects for the penny, and that was by far the number one issue that needs to be addressed. So none of that is a good answer for you, but we're working towards it, but, yeah, in the context of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Trying to get that correction of the lanes is really the primary one now, most imminent.
While I say all this to continue the dialogue and the need for improvement with the congestion to the right side of Blythewood Road as you're going up 77 North, you know, just the absolute need of relief, you know, so.
You're right.
And then we're about to add another 200 cars for the 100, you know, plus homes that this particular neighborhood's going to provide, and we still, and traffic is not going to come into Blythewood down Wilson Road going south, it's going to go up north. So, you know, just again, verbalizing the concern and the need, and for someone to please help us with that, you know. And I think my last question, I just wanted to see if you guys had, you know, now that you've kind of gotten into things a little bit more, have y'all, I know the land behind this particular development, I think it's like 40 acres, have you guys, you know, put eyes on that, is that something? That is, that goes into Oakhurst, I know, right? And so that's a different HOA, but, you know, I'm always thinking, trying to think ahead, you know, you got neighbor, you know, to, it's a compound, family compound, so I know builders like to, you know, once they get into something, sometimes they like to expand, so just.
Is that your property, you want us to look into it? Is that what you have to do?
No, it's not.
I'm just kidding. No, ma'am, we don't, we don't have any intentions on purchasing that parcel at all.
Or, you know, phasing into other, yeah, okay.
No, no, ma'am.
Just curious.
It's in our, as far as we're concerned, is landlocked, and we're not intending on purchasing anything beyond what we're purchasing in that specific area at the moment, and we're not looking, we haven't reached out, I mean, it's just, you know, just because it's land doesn't mean it's, it's good developable land, if that makes sense. So I can confirm that, that is not on our radar.
And I do have one more, sorry. The other concern that I have is, it's not in our jurisdiction, but it was on Reimer Pond Road, it was like 40 unit, units, it was a new, new development, and it was, all those units were purchased by one, one entity, let's say, and it was single-family residence. And the concern is having an out-of-state, one person, you know, one person or one entity owning all, you know, single-family residence, and, you know, I'm just, again, putting something on the record to somehow protect us as a town, you know, and they rent those properties out. There's nothing wrong with renting them out, it's just that when you have somebody that's out of, lives outside, you know, it becomes more difficult to have it the way that it can just, you know, it can, on down the road, it can just be hard to get a hold of that in particular, you know, entity or individual that owns that many units at one time.
Yeah, we have all intentions on making this a prestigious neighborhood where you're going in and you're purchasing the property and you're owning the land. We don't build for rent currently at the time here in the Columbia market, but I will also speak to the fact, too, that my zip code is 29016, and my kid goes to Beltone Hambury, so I travel through these streets, go to Daco every weekend almost with my kid when it's sunny outside and not rainy. So the things that I said at the last meeting about, you know, putting our best foot forward and being intentional and working with the staff, with Carol, on the staff level to make sure that this keeps the Blythewood town feel, is something that I'm very, very, very passionate about. So it's, it's nothing of that sense. I'm, I'm the guy for Pulte in land development to make the decisions, to get the engineers and the drawings across the finish line, and it is my intent and my duty to 100% do what I said I was going to do. So, you know, we will make sure this community is a special one.
Yep, I appreciate that. And again, it's just to record and, you know, air out that, you know, what concerns could become, but yeah, and it's good to know that you do live here and reside here.
I'm in that traffic as well, so that's why, you might see my smirk on my face whenever y'all mention it, or whenever we talked about it last week, but I'm, I'm in that traffic as well, and that's one of the reasons why I did do the due diligence as a, you know, per the comment, to make sure that that work was bonded and taken care of. It's, it's not our responsibility, however, but I do make sure I put my best foot forward to making sure that our town is the way that it needs to be, and things are happening the way that they need to happen.
Yeah, well, I just think that adding another neighborhood, I mean, it is our, you know, it's part of our responsibility to ask the questions and not, you know, cause more friction with regards to, you know, what we're doing and adding, and then we're just creating our own, you know, problems. So it's just trying to think through, like, what do we need to do to get there, you know, to your point.
Right.
Thank you, Erica. No, it's good, good dialogue, good, good question and answer. Commissioners, any other questions? Did we have anybody sign in? So we are, we are ready to make a motion.
Well, one second, really quickly, Carol, just want to make sure I heard you earlier correctly. These items, are we seeking, are these items, these comments that you had, add back to us? Did you see anything in those that would prevent us from approval tonight on the preliminary plat? You seen outside of the ones that I've already addressed, really minor, with the extent of it being a couple of notes here or there added?
No, I mean, I think this is something that can be handled at staff level beyond this, but.
Okay.
So just to expand on that, that there are, there are still some additional items requiring clarification, which Mr. Williamson has included, so there will be that proviso in our approval, but I'm looking for a motion to approve the subdivision preliminary plat, bearing in mind the requirement for additional information as spelt out by Mr. Williamson. Do I have a motion?
No move. Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, while we've got a chance. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the preliminary plat is approved with the requirement for the additional information to be provided to staff. Item three, open citizen's comment. Mr. Williamson, do you want to just make a comment about what's going on?
Yeah, so as you know, we have our consultant working on the zoning ordinance rewrite, and then back early in December, Kelly McCormick, who's employed by Kenda Keast Collaborative, whom we are contracted with, sent an email saying that she was leaving Kenda Keast Collaborative, and that she is working on a transition. So I have actually scheduled a meeting for this Thursday to talk with essentially the employee who will be taking over for her. But that has, as you can imagine, there, not a lot has gone on in the month of December, so I'm eager to get cranked back up with this, because we were going along, we had the Plan Commission Chair, Kirk and I, we had relatively regular meetings going over sections of the ordinance, and, and that all kind of, it's kind of delayed one way or the other, between us, not me having to make the meetings, and then this announcement. So hopefully, we'll get moving here quickly and get something in front of you, and, and Mr. Smith, I can update you on that as well, because that's a big, that would be a big responsibility to Plan Commission. Basically rewriting the entire zoning ordinance and, and a new zoning map, so, so that is all to come in 2024. And I did also want to point out to the Plan Commission, you know, the concern with traffic, and as you know, traffic is about to get even more intense in the coming years with the improvements for Scout Motors. So I did ask the representative from DOT who has come before, the town council before, to come back in January, so I would encourage y'all to attend that.
Good.
That's January 22nd, 6 o'clock, for Town Council meeting.
Could we possibly also get Richland County at the same meeting to go over both pieces?
Penny? Yeah, that would actually, I'll try to see if I can do that. Yeah, I think that would be good. Thank you.
Any other comments anybody wishes to make? In which case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Yeah.